This is TV thirty. It is seven o'clock, so I will count you in. Standby. And in five, four, three, two, one.
And good evening and welcome to this, the February twenty, yes, February twenty eighth meeting of the University Council. Now call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barry Antos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Kicks, absent for the record. Vice Mayor Carling.
Here.
Mayor Marchand.
Here. Okay, well, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, may it be the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the twenty twenty-three Climate Action Plan Progress Report, we have Tricia Ponto as presenting. Sorry, didn't mean to run over your lines there.
Honorable Mayor Marchand and members of the City Council, this is your City Manager, Mariana Marchand. You introduce the speaker, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. This is the twenty twenty-three Climate Action Plan Progress Report. This is the first year of implementing our twenty twenty-two Climate Action Plan. So this was an update to our original Climate Action Plan, which was first completed in twenty twelve. So this was an update that set new greenhouse gas emissions targets, so carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five, and it also added in climate resilience and preparing the the community for climate impacts. And we also established a third goal to be a leader in local climate action. And this this plan called for annual reports to City Council to check in on progress implementing the actions in the plan, kind of hold ourselves accountable and stay on track to meet our goals. So the item tonight is the twenty twenty-three Progress Report, and it it highlights projects, programs, events, just key efforts over the course of twenty twenty-three to imply impact, implement the actions in the plan. And the Climate Action Plan also has thirty-five priority actions, and so this Progress Report provides an update on where we are implementing those key priority actions. And then also included in this report is a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the year twenty twenty-two. When we were doing the Climate Action Plan update, we were using a twenty seventeen baseline emissions, and we were updating the plan during COVID. Didn't make sense to complete greenhouse gas emissions inventory during COVID. Would have been abnormal from what normal emissions would look like in Livermore. So we, this year, we completed a new inventory for twenty twenty-two, which will give us a little bit better snapshot of what our emissions were at the time of cap adoption. So I'll walk through some of the the highlights that are in this Progress Report. Something we really focused on in this first year was dedicating resources and building our our connections and our workshop, workshopping with our our community stakeholders. So the city created a brand-new full-time staff position to manage cap implementation. So that's my position, Sustainability Program Manager, to really drive these efforts. And we also established a community working group, so Livermore Climate Action Team meets monthly. It includes members of city staff. Vice Mayor Carling represents council on that working group. We also have members from Quest Science and the Tri-Valley Air Quality Climate Alliance, a member of the school board, researchers from the lab, so a big group of of community stakeholders who are all interested in working on local climate action. So that again, that meets, that group meets monthly. We also launched the Livermore Resilient Hub, which is an online resource hub for residents to find really customized actions, things they can, they can do to reduce their impact and build resilience in their home, in their property, in their apartment. And it'll have really customized resources, rebates, incentives, programs that people can take advantage of. You can also have competitions. Neighbors can get together, compete against each other, or work towards a shared goal. So it's really a great tool for engaging with the community. And we helped organize a number of community events this past year, including the Climate and Environment Expo at Croce and the Livermore Youth Climate Summit. In twenty twenty-three, the city also utilized one hundred percent renewable electricity in our facilities. So we were purchasing renewable one hundred from Ava Community Energy. We also purchased several new electric fleet vehicles and solar-powered EV chargers for our own operations. This photo to the left here are not the exact solar-powered EV chargers we purchased, but we did purchase these units, and we expect them to be installed sometime next month. One will be at City Hall and the other at the Civic Center Library. We are electrification and EV charging ordinances went into effect in twenty twenty-three, so most new buildings in Livermore are required to be constructed all-electric and include more EV charging infrastructure than required by the state building code. And in addition to that, we are partnering with Ava Community Energy to install public EV fast-charging hubs on city-owned properties. So the first project is under construction right now downtown. It'll be part of the L Street Garage and the adjacent surface parkings. We'll have a total of fifty chargers in that project, thirty-two fast chargers and eighteen Level Two chargers. I think that project will be completed hopefully later this year. And we've also been working to convert turf to drought-tolerant and native landscaping on city property. We have completed roadway improvements to improve bicyclists and pedestrians' safety. We repaired, did some significant storm repair damage along the Arroyos, not only repaired damage, but fortified for future storms and floods. We supported local businesses who are working in the green economy space, worked with Gilleg to secure a grant to expand their electric bus manufacturing, and we have been working with Forum Mobility on their project for heavy-duty EV charging or EV truck charging hub out on Greenville Road. And then finally, when working to reduce organic waste through our compliance with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three and the Go Green Initiative, which is doing some waste reduction programs in schools. So all of that and more is included in the the Progress Report, and we'll have that report available on the city's website, along with the original Climate Action Plan at livermoreca.gov/cap. And that concludes my presentation. We're available for questions.
All right. Questions from the council?
I don't have a question, but thanks. Thanks very much for the report. Did you mention there are also students on the on the on the team as well? And I think it's important to point that out because they're the people that are going to be dealing with this for the next several decades. Some of us are limited in our term here on this, but I think it's really important to get student involvement in that, and so they've been an active part of the of the group as well. So thank you for your leadership and thank you for all the things that we're putting in place. Tricia didn't mention the number of grant applications that the group is also looking at, trying to shore up some of the funding that would help implement some of the things that we want to do as a as a city and as a as a region. So I think there's a lot of activity in this, and if you're interested in participating, please look at the report. There are many things that homeowners and folks rental, people living in rental properties and people running businesses can look toward in terms of addressing climate action. And I think it'd be important for all of us to participate in some way or fashion. Every little bit helps. So thanks very much.
We talked about the the young people involved. The Climate Action Summit that we had over the summer was was very, very good, and the amount of participation that we had was like two hundred people on that. So excellent. Councilmember Barry Antos, do you have questions, comments? Okay. Councilmember Branning?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to thank Ms. Montel for the update. I wanted to point out a couple of things really quickly. One, I've said it before, but our cap is one of the best laid-out government documents I've ever seen in my life. The original one, for anyone who's looking for ideas on staff or elsewhere for how to lay out an action plan, they did an amazing job really breaking things down in just absolutely great ways. Following up, the update is also very well laid out. And I just wanted to point out briefly how few things have actually been delayed or changed from our original plan. And just to thank you and staff for doing such a good job of keeping us on track and keeping Livermore as a climate leader.
Thank you.
And I'll just point out, not everybody knows that we have a parking app. A lot of times, people spend a lot of time looking for parking, and there actually is a parking app that you can download for free. And for example, right now, there's seven hundred nine parking spaces in the downtown, fifteen ADA at the main garage and six at the I Street Garage. So that's a real-time parking app that's that's available. Four hundred and fifty-nine in the biggest lot and two hundred and fifty in the in the I Street. So people complain that they can't find parking. It's on your phone. You can get that. Because this is, do we have any speaker cards for, I know we don't typically do that, but since this is a
No, sir.
topic. Okay. Well, great. Well, thank you ever so much. Great, great information. I look forward to continued progress on this in the future. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to three point two, the twenty twenty-four Eastern Alameda County Human Services Needs Assessment and the final report.
Mayor Marchand, members of the City Council, this is your City Manager, Mariana Marchand. This item is going to be presented by Josh Thurman with the help of our consulting team. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Josh Thurman, your Human Services Program Manager. Tonight, we're here with Anupam Sharma and Bex Reno from GSI Research and Training Institute. We're here to present the two thousand twenty-four Eastern Alameda County Human Services Needs Assessment. Just before we get started, I'd like to thank my colleagues in Pleasanton and Dublin and for a long nineteen months of preparing this document, and thanks to GSI for their hard work as well. This document is a little bit different than needs assessments that you've seen previously. We really, we we have the quantitative data that that we need in order to inform decisions, but we really focus on the qualitative data, trying to tell the story of the needs in the community rather than just some graphs and and charts and and a report that would go sit on a shelf. We really heard loud and clear from our Human Services Commissioners, the nonprofits and other community members that we really wanted that document with some actionable items, and I think we were able to accomplish that. And so now we'll be tasked with carrying out what's in the document. And so I'll run through just a couple of introductory slides, and then I will turn it over to GSI for their portion of the just a quick history of it. So the the first needs assessment was completed in two thousand and three. This was at conclusion of the two thousand census, US Census, that's every ten years. The two thousand and eleven needs assessment was just an expanded version of the two thousand and three. It really just kind of updated it. And then we started our the twenty twenty-four Needs Assessment in twenty twenty-two, and as I mentioned, it was about a nineteen-month process to get here to where we're at today. And so I will turn it over now to GSI.
Thanks, Josh. Mayor Marchand, council members, good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Anupam Sharma. I'm a project associate with GSI Research and Training Institute. It has been, oh, thank you. It has been an absolute pleasure to work on this needs assessment with the community members of the Tri-Valley. So outreach efforts were coordinated very strongly with nonprofit executive directors and community members. So this was done with a steering committee that consisted of city government representatives and nonprofit executive directors, along with the Eastern Alameda Power and Action Committee, which was composed entirely of community members who had received human services in the past. Any and all results that you see in that report, any stories that we were able to tell would not have been possible without the community members on the E-PAC, including importantly, our youth community members who brought a crucial perspective to the challenges and indeed opportunities for improvement that face Livermore and the Tri-Valley. So E-PAC members helped guide many of our data collection efforts, including community tabling events, focus groups with community members and nonprofit organizations, individual interviews, key informant interviews, along with presenting at Joint Human Services Commission meetings, City Council meetings, and posting a public-facing needs assessment website. So to briefly go over the nonprofit, the challenges facing both communities and nonprofit organizations, this will come as a surprise to none of you. There is a pressing need for quality, affordable housing, along with a pressing need for high-quality, affordable, culturally competent healthcare and mental health care. There is a need to hire folks to help community members navigate services. There are several organizations doing very important work in the area. Not many, many community members know where to go or whom to approach to access the services that they need. Safety in general has been an issue for folks, a sense that things aren't as safe, that the cities aren't as safe as they could be, along with mentions of a substance use issue in some areas and lack of transportation, particularly to access a healthcare. For challenges facing youth in particular is, of course, affordable childcare, the availability of accessible, affordable extracurricular activities. We heard very strongly that there is a passion for sports in the Tri-Valley, but it is oftentimes not affordable or not feasible for parents who work full-time jobs to get their kids to practices, to get the gear, or make weekend trips to Vegas to attend tournaments. Safety shows up again for youth, both physical and psychological. There are mention of slurs or hate speech that were, that was used by some students in high schools, which was concerning, along with mental health issues, and finally, mention of an inability to use the restrooms because the school restrooms are closed during the day to prevent students from going in and using e-cigarettes. And very quickly, some challenges facing nonprofits are, again, like I mentioned, many groups doing very important work. There's some concern around whether some groups are stepping on each other's toes by actually working in the same area. For example, food services provision, there seems to be many organizations doing that work, and there's concern around whether or not some of those services are redundant. There's, of course, the challenge of workforce recruiting and hiring racially competent, culturally responsive workforce. There's an issue of perception of need, the idea that relative to the rest of Alameda County, the Tri-Valley in particular is doing pretty well. And so why do they need all the resources when, of course, that is anything but the case? And of course, a need for funding and infrastructure, particularly in times of crisis and in emergencies. And now I'll hand it off to my colleague and co-project director, Bex Reno.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go briefly through some of our recommendations, and then, of course, we can have questions afterwards. We have two separate sets of recommendations, one being what we titled Approach Recommendations, and these are really meant to be the how. How do we do this work differently to ensure long-term sustainable change? And then the next set of recommendations are really around what? What do we recommend doing to address some of these needs? For the Approach Recommendations, the first is to implement a series of North Star questions. We have these proposed in the final document, and these are really just to orient everyone towards the same end goal and to make sure that through all processes and procedures we are collaboratively working towards enacting the kind of change that we want to see. And we also recommend continued community engagement. I think if there was any takeaway that my team had from this, it was really around how invaluable this work was to engage community members and to ensure that there was bidirectional communication between nonprofits, between elected officials, between city staff, and the community members themselves, to ensure that this isn't just a report that gets done every ten years, but that we have the sort of communication network so that everyone is is keenly aware of what the needs are and what services are needed. And then identifying systemic challenges and building relationships. We all know that no individual lives a single-issue life, and I think that was one of our strongest takeaways from attending focus groups and having interviews is that needs are complex and they're deeply intertwined. So we really recommend thinking about the ways that these issues are intertwined so that we can identify some critical leverage points for change. And then finally, in the set of recommendations is building relationships. We sort of struggled with what goes in and what goes out, what constitutes a human service and what's not. We know a lot of other entities are working on these critical issues. But the end of the day, cooperation amongst and between these different entities is key. So we recommend building relationships and having long-term sustained relationships with these different entities. For the actionable recommendations, first, we have the recommendation to create a regional service network. We know there are a number of different initiatives and efforts in place already to link the nonprofits. And this recommendation is really to buttress and support those existing efforts and to think strategically about how those networks can be grown and what different forms that might take, either from having a place and space to convene nonprofits with a dedicated staff person who, that's their full-time role, to ensure that they have the time and capacity to do so, on up through an option to co-locate, for example, an additional place where service or like services are co-located. In addition, we have the recommendation for youth services and supports. Those include both in-school and in-community potential programs. Again, recognizing some of these are already in place in the school, but we heard loud and clear from students that they want more opportunities to receive services in school, to be able to receive services out school, outside of school, and to have more recreational opportunities and time spent with family members and with other individuals in the community. There's a recommendation around Tri-Valley nonprofit funding, which alongside other recommendations, will require a little bit more work to figure out what does this look like. But we heard consistently from nonprofit organizations just how cumbersome the grant process can sometimes be, as well as reporting requirements. And for smaller nonprofits, this represents a significant burden, who might not have a grant writer on staff, might not have an evaluation team to be able to write up their results. So there is a call both for more funding and sustained funding, as well as options such as raising sort of the ceiling or raising the floor on what grant amounts are to make sure that it represents a multi-year investment. Building pipelines for a diverse workforce shows up in sort of a cross-cutting recommendation for a number of the different needs that you saw, including mental health and the other nonprofit workforces for those providing direct services. And there are several recommendations in the report as to how to build on the existing infrastructure that you all have, as well as how to leverage the rich diversity that you have in Livermore and the rest of the Tri-Valley with the increasing diversity that we're seeing. And then finally, there's a call to consider multi-sector services and infrastructure solutions. Again, this goes back to individuals not living single-issue lives, and instead, looking at how can we think about braiding services? How can we think about how to get in front of, how to to work more upstream so that we can prevent individuals from becoming unhoused or provide intensive services for individuals who are experiencing a mental health crisis or who are using substances. So there are several issues that were deeply intertwined, and that's really what came out in the stories that we heard. And so our recommendation is to really think holistically about how do we braid services? How do we make sure that we can provide wraparound services? And then finally, infrastructure solutions, just making sure that we're looking at, you know, what do we need on an infrastructure level? And that's what we heard from a lot of nonprofits is just not having the resources to focus on infrastructure.
Thank you. So the next steps, so we're here presenting tonight in February. You are the third council to hear it, so Dublin and Pleasanton have heard this presentation as well. And then the summer of two thousand and twenty-four, we're looking to hold another Joint Human Services Commission meeting to really take the feedback from the three councils and start to prioritize recommendations. And then the fall of two thousand and twenty-four, we're looking for to take those Human Services Commission's recommendations back to city councils and possibly incorporate into the three cities. If there's a cost associated with thing, look at incorporating it into future budgets. And then we're looking at another annual Human Services presentation to councils. That's your annual presentation that you get, and then we'll report back on any of the actions that have been taken and the progress. And then in June, we'll have our annual Joint Human Services Commission to continue developing some of the recommendations and and see where we're at, our progress. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions or comments?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Branning?
Oh, you know I have comments. So first of all, this is just absolutely wonderful. I'm blown away by this document. I want to thank you so much. I was told not to spend an hour talking about it, so I'm going to try to be concise here. But I could spend an entire council meeting just digging through this and going through all the information and data in here. You did a wonderful job. This is really one of the most comprehensive documents I've seen on the needs in the Tri-Valley or even in my other service, pretty much one of the best documents I've seen on the needs in any area. So fabulous work. Thank you so much for that. I know we'll have a chance to dive into the individual actions later, so I'm gonna move past that. And I just wanted to talk about kind of broadly, one of the things that really stood out in this document to me at least. And that's the strengths and weaknesses or strengths and challenges, I should say, that we face in the Tri-Valley. And I think this really did summarize well for specifically Livermore. I think it's very applicable. The strength that we have were really about our community. It was that we have a diverse community that supports each other, that helps each other. We have a strong nonprofit sector, supported by a religious community, supported by our secular community. We really have residents who are giving, donating, volunteering, and helping. We have schools and education that is stepping up to fill gaps where the cities and the county cannot. This community-oriented approach is something we don't see everywhere else, and it is absolutely the backbone of everything we do in Livermore. It leaves us still with challenges that are big. We have the challenge of housing, healthcare, mental health. These are not things that Livermore is going to solve on our own, but they're things that we are working on. We spend a lot of time on this dais, working on the ways that we can help improve the lives of the residents of Livermore citizens. And that is everyone in Livermore, whether they own a home or not, whether they make, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand a year or barely making ends meet. We're working hard for everyone. And I know we're going to get comments after this saying it's not enough, and I agree. It isn't enough. We need to do more, and we are trying. The constraints in this are very clear. Some of the constraints we can work on, and some of them are outside of our control. And so I want to say that I appreciate the work staff is doing with a very limited budget to really prop up our nonprofits to help the most vulnerable of our community. And my question, I suppose, to Mr. Thurman is, there are a lot of actions proposed. Do we feel like we're prepared to start making changes to really implement the recommendations of this report?
Yeah, I think we were, we were pretty aware and conscious of, you know, having things, actionable items in the report that we could actually accomplish. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things there. For instance, the addressing the grants process, we've already begin, we've already begun to address that issue, simplify it a little bit more for our nonprofits. So yes, I believe there are several things that we can do to accomplish the goals.
Thank you. I'm very much looking forward to when you return. I appreciate this very much.
Vice Speaker Curling?
Yeah, thanks to all of you for this. I, one question is, well, how's, what's the best way to get information back? Is it to you, Josh, if we have questions or comments about the report?
Yes.
Okay. The other, I guess, I've, I've heard about the bathroom issue that Mr. Sherman brought up. Have we worked with the school district in this regard? I mean, I mean, it's, I think it's horrible that we have to close bathrooms because of these cigarettes. And I'm sure there are other reasons why the bathrooms are closed other than these cigarettes, but, I mean, I think, I just wonder if we're involving the school district in some of these issues as well?
We will. The next steps are bringing together, again, bringing together our nonprofits, including other decision-making bodies like the school districts to address some of these issues. We're really just introducing the item now, so we haven't quite had a chance to dive into it, but yes, we will.
Because I think that would be important. I mean, their, kids are an important part of this, and we ought to involve the school district as much as we can. So thanks very much for all of your work on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrientas?
Why were the bathrooms closed or having fun with bathrooms?
I, I think what the, the students were saying is the, the schools actually lock the restrooms because, to prevent kids from going in and vaping and doing other things. And so sometimes the doors are locked and they're not able to use the restrooms, and sometimes that prohibits them from drinking enough water during the day if they know the restrooms are not open. And again, that's, that's what we heard directly from some of the students that participated.
Now, I was singing, because I coached, and I was a teacher, and one day I saw the principal and the custodian walking, walking through the commons in Oakland High with his door. So what the heck are you doing? It was the issue, the kids couldn't get to the bathroom, but the problem is, the kids are in there, you know, getting high or whatever, they're getting high, they're cute little innocent kids. Anyway, so they figured, take the doors down. And this way, at least security come by quick and smell, you know, probably get high as they walk by. Anyway, that was one of the issues we did at Oakland High, just took the doors down. And it kind of helped. And, you know, because sometimes the kids are just here for an hour when they want a potty break. But yeah, I know it's an issue. And I know Salinas, they did where they had some windows installed, but they couldn't see too far down, but they can kind of see what the kids were doing. And, you know, as far as smoking or something like that, they couldn't see too much, just enough. So the kids felt like, oh, someone might be watching. I know it's an issue. I know these students, I coach high school kids, and they tell me a lot of things that I really don't want to know.
Again, great information, great report. Some big challenges here. I mean, you're creating a regional service network. It all comes down to resources. And, you know, you have a regional service network, perceptions come into this, and something that I was a founding member of the Tri-Valley Anti-Poverty Collaborative, and actually had a conversation with the director of All in Alameda County, and they said, oh, there is no poverty in the Tri-Valley. Really? That's, that's a remarkable statement, because there absolutely is. It's, it's a state of chronic scarcity, and there absolutely is poverty in the Tri-Valley. So when you have these regional service networks, these perceptions can get in the way, and areas like the Tri-Valley don't get those services. So this is something, when people talk about this, it raises my concern, because, for example, there have been fact-finding and focus groups that never quite find their way out to the Tri-Valley. They're done in Oakland, they're done in Hayward, but we're left out of that conversation. So again, if we're gonna create that service network, let's make it for everybody. You mentioned the, the need for infrastructure solutions and talked about the difficulty of getting mental health services. We don't have BART here in Livermore. So we, it's, it's very difficult for people. They've got to get onto a bus and then get to BART, and then from there, take another bus. So where it might, you know, if you're on the other side of the hill, it might take, you know, 20 minutes, it's gonna take the better part of a day. So these infrastructure solutions, they're gonna take a tremendous amount of resources. And, you know, this is why we're working so hard on ValleyLink, is to get people from Livermore, at least to a BART station, and then over the hill. But there's some, some fairly significant obstacles as we, as you're talking about these, these networks and, and services. So again, I, I look forward to continuing the, the work on this. It is, it's a big lift. Again, it comes down to resources, and as, as Councilmember Branning pointed out, we don't have a lot of those resources, and we're not charged with that responsibility. There are other organizations, other agencies that are. Inter-agency cooperation is extraordinarily important, as you talked about, site sharing and job, you know, having, being able to share those resources is very, very important. So I look forward to the, the next steps and, and great work. Again, excellent report, and thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 4.0, that's the open forum. I'll have the city clerk tell people how they're gonna participate.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-adjourned items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For adjourned items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for the entire consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment on the items pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the city council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at 20 to 8, so 30 minutes will go to 10 after 8. And if there's any further open forum, we'll continue that after the regular business has been conducted. So, first name?
The first speaker is Bill Turnquist, followed by Greg Scott, followed by David McWiggen.
Good evening, John, and Robert, and Ben. I left you for last, Evan, because I appreciate your comments on nonprofits and religious organizations. The thing I want to address here is there's an Altamont thing that has gone on about buying land. We were at the Dublin meeting, and there's another meeting coming on the 15th where it's gonna talk about the purchase of lands. I'm the chairman of the board of the 501(c)(3), which is the Capstone Christian Ministries Cross on the Hill. Sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint for you today, but I'm speaking to you not as experienced in politics or real estate or city meetings, but I'm a retired businessman, a teaching pastor, and a concerned neighbor. The cross we have, which you guys may not know much about, is not run by a church. It's run by a handful of people, some of them here to speak today. We're nondenominational, just to bless, bless the neighborhoods. It's well-liked landmark. It's been there for almost 30 years. It started by one of the owner's daughters as a small, as a rock cross, and then we expanded it to the tilled land and lights. It's loved by a lot of people, churches from the peninsula to Modestone, Stockton. We get a lot of emails from people out of the, the state, over 60 million cars a year, over 60 million cars a year go by the cross going eastbound. And we get comments from them. We even have some airplane pilots, commercial and private, saying what a great landmark it is when they come in at night. As an open space, we have not affected any wildlife. In fact, we've protected it. We have a three or four-person team who, who supports it, Dane here being one of them. We see everything from foxes to coyotes to, in our deer cameras. We haven't heard, heard any reptiles or any frogs. We've helped keep squatters off the property. As you know, the Altamont down there, the road, there's a lot of squatters, there's a lot of junk. We've stopped drug dealing. We've stopped theft from PG&E, where they were just hijacking power off the poles. We've reported to the sheriffs, because that's sheriff's area, and they've been very helpful firing guns, people bringing stolen cars in and stripping them. So as part of the cross, we've also tried to make the land on the other side safe with use of the sheriffs, because it's not city police jurisdiction. That's not my deeper, is it?
Yeah, it is.
That was three minutes?
That was three, it's quick, goes by fast. So if you just finish your thought.
Okay, yeah, let me finish it.
Oh, we got the generals just up. Who'd you finish your thought?
Let, let me get to the bottom of it. We'd like to maintain that as open space. Okay? We're filing with the Alameda County Altamont landfill for us to get a grant to buy it, to keep it open space into perpetuity, keep the cross there, and just support the community, because it really lifts people's, people's hearts. So we will be at the meeting on the 15th. I believe, Robert, you were there at the last meeting, and we'll be there again, I hope. So thank you for your consideration, and let me go overtime.
Thank you.
Three minutes does go by fast, doesn't it?
It does.
I'm used to speaking.
Time flies when you're having fun.
The next speaker is Greg Scott, followed by David McWiggen, followed by Melanie Hendrickson.
Good evening, I'm Greg Scott. I apologize to the young people in the room. I don't think you're told the truth. If you were told the truth, you'd be up here screaming more than I would be. On the climate action plan, if you're gonna have an effective climate action plan, you make a resolution where none of the investments of the city or the pensions go to fossil fuel companies. The other thing is, none of the investments should go to cryptocurrencies. Cryptocurrency like Bitcoin takes all the energy of five New England states except for Massachusetts to run. In other words, it's the equivalent energy of all the businesses and residences. It's one and a half times all the energy that New York City uses for all the businesses. Okay, it's insane to do three transactions a second globally. It's insane. There should be a resolution, the city should have no investments in those things. The other thing is, there should be a drastic water conservation thing. We're watering lawns. We shouldn't be watering lawns. The sites reservoir proposal, it's gonna produce over 300,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year for its 100-year, each year for its 100-year lifecycle. When they decommission it, it's even more with the methane and the carbon dioxide. Where's our, I don't hear much about it in the CPAC, I'll tell you, in the, in the GPAC, the General Planning Advisory Committee. Okay, climate. Okay, housing. Yeah, there's constraints, Councilmember Branning, political mentality is a big constraint. You keep dumping too many resources into too few. The Vineyard 2.0, $20 million to house 25. You have a funding come forward to the city council, I sat here, you have $439,000 in funding. Over 90% of it goes to Vineyard 2.0. It's like a boat, it's a hole in the water to pour money into. And then 4% of it, $18,000 goes to an emergency shelter, and then, what, $19,000 went to City Serv. So you just, you do these things, you pour all this money into it for very few. It's great for the few that are behind the castle walls, I say this over and over, but tell me, I've asked many times, how many homeless have died in Livermore or previous homeless have died in the last 12 months? I've asked that a lot of times. Maybe your Human Services Commission people can answer me that. Oh, on the bathroom, yeah, I went to your September 13 Human Services Commission meeting, and they put a priority, your Human Services employee put a priority on, on a slide up there, put public health first, and your quorum of commissioners disagreed with that public health as far as homelessness. Really? Where's the toilet out there? It's 2:00 in the morning, you know? And you're clueless, your Human Service Commissions are clueless, but you don't want me on the Human Service Commission. You know, I've been homeless, I know something about homelessness, but you don't want me on there? Okay. Where's the bathroom at 2:00 in the morning? What, the fly, the wisdom's in the flies? It's absurd. The whole situation is absurd, and the mentality is the constraint.
The next speaker is David McWiggen, followed by Melanie Hendrickson, followed by Felicia Ziomic.
I had a different topic, but I need to point out something different. You're in violation of the Records Act, my request for the copy of the letter I sent to Chief Young. Been over the 10 days, I was supposed to get it today, didn't get it. Seriously, Johnny, how much research can a single-page letter take? The statute actually has in there that the 10 days is a limit that isn't intended to be taking a full 10 days as it's to not give it to the person. So maybe you can just ask the chief, because he's, you know, right here. I mean, it's just a simple letter. And it is the law, Johnny.
The next speaker is Melanie Hendrickson, followed by Felicia Ziomic, followed by Donna Kabane.
I just came to give a personal, a personal reason for why I would like to see the cross on the hill stay. I moved out here about a year and a half ago. Try not to cry. After my husband passed away, both of my parents and my in-laws were killed in a car accident. I now care for an auntie that I drive over the hill because her uncle passed, I mean, her husband passed my uncle, and she had to put her adult child into a care home because he is special needs. Sometimes I'm just tired and I'm lonely, but when I see the cross, it reminds me that I have a God that has people that I love in His care that I'll see again, and that I have the strength to go on and do what I need to do to help my aunt. And I'm sure I'm not the only one that drives by that cross and gets a little hope. Maybe a mom who has a daughter or a son who's considering suicide, and she's at her wits' end, somebody who lost a job, somebody whose house is in foreclosure, but maybe one minute as they drive by, it gives them a minute of hope. So I'm just asking if there's any way to keep it, if you could please do that.
The next speaker is Felicia Ziomic, followed by Donna Kabane, followed by Jan Higdon.
Good evening, city council members and city employees. I'm speaking to express serious concerns about the airport land use development and analysis process for engaging with citizens who are stakeholders and wish to participate in future stakeholder meetings and discussions regarding the airport development. Apparently, the stakeholders are being separated into various subgroups, and when citizens are interested in participating as a stakeholder, the city are interested in participating as a stakeholder, the city presupposes which subgroup the citizen is assigned to without giving them a choice. The city website doesn't include the names of the various subgroups and doesn't explain that the city will be presupposing which subgroup the citizen wishes to join. When I joined the list for stakeholder outreach, I wasn't informed the city would be separating stakeholders into subgroups, nor that the city assigned me to the local environmental consideration subgroup. As the owner of a home in the Somerset neighborhood just adjacent to the airport, my interests also include financial, land use, airport policy and safety, not just environmental. I still have no clue what the list of subgroups is. Saturday, I happened to see a timeline on the airport land use and development website, and it listed a stakeholder meeting in February, see my snippet far below. Knowing I enrolled as a stakeholder, I questioned why I didn't receive a meeting notice, requested when and where this meeting is scheduled, and where to find materials to review ahead of time. Mr. Cardwell replied, confirming I'm on the list for stakeholder outreach in the local environmental consideration subgroup, and mentioned that stakeholders are being separated into various subgroups the first I heard of this. Despite having many names and emails of people who have previously given input on issues with the airport, there's been no notification about this process except in the last airport commission meeting agenda. Posting on a website is not sufficient. Despite confirmation that I'm on the city list of stakeholders, when I send an email to airportdevelopment@livermoreca.gov, I get a reply indicating my email address isn't on the allowed sender's list, so my emails to this address aren't being received. Fortunately, they were received by Mr. Cardwell and Mr. Stuth's direct email. The message conveyed by this lack of transparency and lack of full disclosure is that you don't want citizens to participate in the airport land use development analysis process. That may not be the message you intend to send, but that's the message I'm receiving, so please don't let this continue. I've asked to receive a list of the airport development subgroup so I can choose which ones I want to be included in. I've also asked to receive meeting notes from the stakeholder meetings that have already occurred, as well as a list of future stakeholder meetings that the public can attend. My suggestions for updating your land use development and analysis website, list the various stakeholder subgroups and describe the type of feedback you seek from each one. Allow citizens to choose for themselves which subgroups they wish to be assigned to and therefore receive meeting notices. Three, post the agenda for future subgroup meeting with any supporting documents, information that should be reviewed before the meeting. And finally, post the meeting notes after the meeting, including next steps for that subgroup. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Donna Kabane, followed by Jan Higdon, followed by Doug Mann.
At the city council meeting, February 12th, I made two requests. First, I asked the city council to reduce the FBO timeline to certify an existing 1,000 gallon tank for UL-94 at the airport. The air permit fee is paid, but a 30 to 60 day comment period to sell UL-94, it still needs to occur. Permits can be expedited if a health issue exists. I have sent emails to Ms. Becky Yu at the Air District requesting to fast track the permit. I urge the council members to directly contact Ms. Yu as well. My second request was to ask the city council to perch, purchase a 800, 8, 8,500, excuse me, gallon tank for 100 unleaded AV fuel. Tonight, under matters for consideration, please consider the possible purchase of an 8,500 gallon tank to be used for GAMMY-100. The FAA has already certified GAMMY-100 as a drop in replacement fuel for all types of piston engines. With $7 to $8 million in the airport enterprise funds account, there is more than enough money to cover the costs of a new tank. A city Facebook page states, "The city is in contact with GAMMY to be one of the first recipients of GAMMY-100 when it will be available in California this summer." Does this mean GAMMY, that Livermore is on the GAMMY reservation list or in contract to receive the first large batches of GAMMY-100? Please clarify what "in communication with GAMMY" means. I would like to echo Felicia's concerns about the process for the stakeholders scoping meetings for the airport development. We were asked to submit names of non-aviation groups because none had been included. I submitted the names and emails of 35 groups, agencies and concerned individuals. Felicia was told she would be grouped with others having environmental concerns. However, our concerns are not limited to the environment. We are also concerned about land use, financial aspects, the health of residents living within 1.5 mile radius of LVK, et cetera. There needs to be a reset with more transparency and more inclusion. Please list all of the dates and times of the meetings and let those interested pick the meetings they want to attend. For those watching at home, if you're concerned about the use of leaded AV fuel, noise, small jet aircraft, just have one sentence, please contact Director Cardwell at BWCardwell@livermoreca.gov to be included in airport development meetings. Now is the time to speak up. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Jan Higdon, followed by Doug Mann, followed by Dane Lowry.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jan Higdon. I've lived in Livermore for 50 years. My husband, Al Higdon, volunteered to go up on the Cross on the Hill with Dane and a few others every single week for 15 years. And personally, Al and I got cards, letters, texts, emails thanking us for, that the cross is there. It brings encouragement and hope and, what's my other one? Hope, encouragement and comfort. So thank you very much.
The next speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Dane Lowry, followed by Constance Cops.
Good evening, council. First of all, I'd like to compliment you on dousing those lights that used to shine on the screen. This is the first council meeting I've been to where they have not been on, and it's a welcome change, makes the screen a lot easier to read. So I'm going to jump to the end first. What I'd like during matters initiated is to put forward a motion on the earliest possible agenda to redirect staff to not pursue any new open space land using open space funding, nor continued on any that are currently in process, and to withdraw the Altamont grants that were recently submitted. So we learned a lot about, I learned a lot about the Altamont fund, and I think you might even learn something if you hear what I have to say about it about, you know, 10 days ago. The fund has been giving out grants for 25 years. They've given out 14 grants in their existence, that's less than one per year, and none have ever been refused. So you gave permission in closed session for your staff to move forward on these land purchases, and we don't know all the details of that, but here's what your staff went ahead and did. Eight days before the special meeting, they applied for four grants for the one agenda, and none of them were approved. The most shocking thing we learned was not that, but it's that the Altamont funds don't protect anything. I mean, we all are cultured to believe that open space funds protect the land forever, but it acts more like just a long-term loan. Because the only penalty, for example, the Hartford property, if Livermore were to buy it, and then some future council, not as wise as this one, were to decide to sell the land for houses, all they have to do is pay back the money to the fund interest-free. That's the only protection. We need to, a little bit of time to develop better protection for the funds that are, the open space funds that are, that are sent, that are spent. So, I mean, for that, that's part of the reason. I don't really want Livermore to buy any new open space funds right now, especially when there are others that give us a lot more confidence in their ability to, to take care of them. I mean, Capstone's a great example. They're, they're a ready-made volunteer organization that already shows how they steward the land, and it wouldn't cost the city any money, any money. The city, if they buy the land, is going to have to put budget into maintenance, and that's another thing with the $30 million infrastructure deficit annual, you don't have extra money to put into these kinds of things when there are other buyers that would take all of them. Work with the community, and everything will get easier and better in the end. It doesn't serve you to work against what the residents, you know, want and need. And sell unleaded fuel at the airport, please. Just follow the recommendations, and thank you very much.
The next speaker is Dane Lowry, followed by Constance Cops, followed by Grateful Heart Ranch.
Mayor of the city council, thank you for letting me speak here. I just want to talk about the Cross on the Hill. It's been there for more than 30 years. It's 550 feet tall and 240 feet wide. It is lit up every night by volunteers. It's all solar powered. It's open space up there, of course. We maintain it well. We take care of the property, and it provides comfort for many people who drive the road, as you've heard already. We would really like to figure out a way to get a grant and continue that open space. It would save the taxpayers here money from buying that property, if we could figure out a way to do that. It would take care of maintaining that, would keep the costs from the city from having to maintain that area since it's all being maintained by volunteers currently. And just the last thing, you keep a few cows off there, you keep the green gases down too. So we're here to help, and we hope that you'll participate and help us get this accomplished. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Constance Cops, followed by Grateful Heart Ranch, followed by Brett Adams.
Hi, I'm here for a couple reasons. I did put a card out for 3-2. I don't think you got it. Did you get it or not? So I won't talk about that, I'll write Josh. I've talked to Josh before and people about, like, my concerns as well with human services and, and how, how, you know, and solutions on how we can, potential solutions for the problems that we have. One of our biggest problems in general, I think, is retaining good educators everywhere right now. We find with children, their phones seem to take them down. A lot, you get a lot of information when you're dealing with a small computer in your hand at all times, but it doesn't love you, you know? It's not going to observe you the way a person would observe you. It would not give you the same comfort as a cross would when you're having anxiety. Part of the problem for retaining good teachers, as you said, you know, you're spread thin, resources are spread very thin, and we have to do our best, you know, to provide for as many as we can. And I took a class in the 70s, in a college class, that of course I never got credit for because, oh, this doesn't count when you go on to your four-year or whatever. And it was, it really did talk about how population was a, not a problem, but it was one of our biggest challenges, you know, to, you know, keep people dispersed, you know, and, you know, peace, love, dove, you know, so we're all living good together. Some of us are always going to have more than others, but, you know, that's not always the case. And as a teacher myself, running into like, you know, all the different roles you play, you play a social worker, you play, you know, the math person, you're, you know, trying to keep everybody as, you know, integrated into society as you can, you know, giving people a sense of purpose. And then your teachers have a whole other set of problems. One of the biggest ones is, I think, at the federal level where you've got windfall and different deals that affect your social security, which is really what sparked my whole business model back in like 2004, 2005, to offset social security. Again, this wasn't what I was really going to talk about when I came here, but, you know, we, it just, I was geared towards this. I would really like to see more creative approaches to how we solve these problems and integrate everybody, all social classes, and I know it's hard, you know, I know you guys have a tough job. Thanks.
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, we have six minutes left and three speakers. The next speaker is Grateful Heart Ranch, followed by Brett Adams, followed by Carl Wentey.
Hi. Hi, my name's Kelly Gavea, and I represent Grateful Heart Ranch. And Robert Carleen and I have met at the last meeting. Mr. Branning, I want to commend you. Thank you for your honesty and your integrity with caring genuinely with what happens in your meetings. It was very apparent. And you too, sir, you too, mayor. When we first came in this room, you took an oath, pledge allegiance to the flag, one nation under God. And whether you realize it or not, he's alive, and he's here, and he puts you all, and everyone in this room, he put all of you in place, in a position of authority to do something different, to make a change, to do the right thing. And we have a nation now so divided and so torn apart because we've done one thing, constantly lean on our own understanding and say, we've got to have a conversation, we've got to do this, we've got to do that. No, we don't. We don't got to do anything except stick to the principles of the Bible and what this country was founded on. Plain and simple. Every person in this country who enjoys their religion, whether you be Sikh, Hindu, Jewish, it doesn't matter, we all have one God in the end. And when we start unraveling that, we lose everything. There's no mention of Livermore, California, or the United States in the Bible. But each one of us is going to die. Every person in here will die, and you will meet your maker. And the decisions that you make, and the choices that you do in your planning, even when you call it climate change and buying property for the sake of building battery storage facilities at the base of the Altamont, you'll reconcile with that. I'm here to say thank you, because in your infinite power, you can also say no, you can also withdraw petitions. I don't know about any of the other properties, but that cross property and the property across from it, I know what the agenda for that is. And people who have that agenda, and when it's hidden, should be ashamed, because that cross doesn't just belong to the Christians here. This country is a Christian country, and every other religion gets to enjoy its freedoms and will continue to enjoy its freedoms if we honor and uphold faith. That cross genuinely belongs to God. And I ask with all humbleness and kindness, please withdraw your petition. Don't do anything under false pretenses or with another agenda. There are millions of people out there who made decisions and are wise, government who decided many years ago to give up paper bags in leoplastic. And then a few years later, they turn around and they said, hey, we've got all this landfill, let's go with something different. Let's make the government, people have to pay for it. Now, that just came out last year, there's eight million pounds, and it's even worse than it ever was before, and we're being taxed for it. So in all the government's infinite wisdom, they still make mistakes. And look at the legacy they live, leave when they do it. So I ask you, and I thank you, please make a difference this time. Listen to the people.
Excuse me, excuse me. What we do, I don't allow booing in the audience, so, you're fine, thank you very much, ma'am. I don't allow booing, so that means we don't have applause either. So if you want to show respect for the speaker, just raise your hand, and then the city council can see your reaction. But then, the person who's speaking doesn't see if people disagree with them or if they agree with them. So they're not inhibited, they're not intimidated. So this way, it allows everybody a welcoming, friendly place to speak. And so I don't allow booing, I don't allow applause, because that way, everybody is able to express themselves without feeling inhibited. Okay? Thank you.
The next speaker is Brett Adams, followed by Carl Wentey.
Good evening, council. Good evening. Good evening, council members and everyone present. I'm here to-
I'm here to speak a minute about the cross on the hill. And the scripture Romans five eight, it says, God showed his love in this, that while we were still yet sinners, Jesus Christ died on the cross for all of our salvation. So the thing I know is this is that no matter where you stand, no matter what you believe, no matter where you're at, Jesus does stand for all of us, each and every one of us. He died on that cross for every soul that walks this earth. I've heard many testimonies about how people are affected by that cross. I've even sat there sometimes and just listened to the traffic and things like that as they go through that area. And you don't hear a lot of the honking and all of the stuff that can go on when people are getting upset and frustrated with the traffic jams that are sitting there. And it does change people's lives in the sense of it does give them that sense of there is hope. There is something greater than the circumstances and things that they're going through, the fact that they may want to take their life, that they want to go home and give their husband or the wife a piece of their mind, that they're stuck in traffic, that they're not going to make the next rent. It truly is something that lights up more than just those lights on the cross. It lights up hearts, minds, precious souls and uplifts people. I was also the original surveyor with a crew member of mine that laid out that cross. I belong to a group called the Yoke Fellows, a men's Bible study group. We took care of her years. Jan's husband was one of them. And him and our brother Reese, they've been taking care of it for a long, 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 long time. Our brother Al, of course, is in heaven with our Lord and Maker. And so I believe it is an important thing to maintain and to remain. And guys and girls, I thank you all very much for your hearing and God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
The last speaker is Carl Wentie.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, as always, thank you for what you do. Those that are taking part of the process, showing up, running for office. Those who put on bulletproof vests, go to work, keep us safe, salute you. Those that are first responding when things happen, thank you all for what you do to have us live in an awesome community. Mariana Marshava, as you continue to work with a great team, a great group of people moving this forward, this perfectly imperfect system, right? There's no worse form of government, except for every other form there was. But continue to feed the good wolf, pushing the direction of the righteous, the good, which is what you all are continuing to do, knowing you can never do enough, knowing the system's imperfect, but just keep moving things forward. Thanks to all that show up and, you know, speak. Thanks to those that get after, looking after the most destitute. Greg Scott, I'm mad too. Sometimes maybe what can you do to like not be so mad to help drive in the direction of what you want to achieve? And I still owe you that email and I'm supposed to be addressing them. I understand this. Interesting precedent, by the way, Mr. Al Colasat on the first speaker, huh? I'm also here to talk about the GPAC, the GPU. I'd like to say thank you to the general, the general plan update advisory committee. And that process going on as governed by the California state constitution to update this plan has been going on darn near two years now, something like that. I don't know. Might only be 18 months or so. Got to get through a bunch of arena cycles. We've got to look at light industrial. We have to look at transportation, transit based housing, so much stuff. And then you got to turn this big slow crank. I was like, where's the AI in this and the machine learning to turn data on it? But per your predecessor, it's a very slow crank, but in God we trust, everyone else coming data. We're getting real close to the data time coming through on all this. So outside looking in, I'd like to thank Mr. Cardwell and who's, there's, there's a lot on the plate of the government and what's going on. Your name comes up a lot. Please continue to do the great job that you're doing. The focus areas, don't forget about the other specific plans that still need time, love and attention, right? Don't just get caught up in the new areas. We have a downtown that's still looking mighty like it did a few years back. And also the South Livermore Valley specific plan. And the, who was it? I forget actually who came to present to the ag advisory committee on behalf of the general plan update committee. And I am the chair of the agricultural advisory committee. We sent a letter representing agriculture to city of Livermore, to the GPAC. And just want to anywhere that, anywhere that agricultural, agricultural lands are involved. We'd like to, you know, have a seat at the table, have a discussion. We share very parallel goals with the Trivalle Conservancy. It's really about preserving and enhancing agriculture and agriculture lands and protecting the natural qualities, right? Looking at habitat corridors, looking at open space, but enhancing the agricultural economy, which in God we trust, everyone else come with data is not thriving. I think there's been a lot of data. We have the LAFCO reports, the UC Davis reports. And so we know that we need to continue to focus on that. So we're meant to be a committee to serve as a technical panel of experts, the board of supervisors and other public agencies, including cities districts on matters involving economic enhancement agriculture and environmental conservation on applicable agricultural lands. We serve ready to collaborate on all things while moving forward for the betterment of Livermore. Namaste.
And I did get your letter today. Thank you. Is that it? Any for the speakers?
That concludes public comment.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment period. Moving on to the consent calendar. These are typically routine in nature and usually unless someone from the council wishes to pull something, it's passed in a single motion. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak on the consent?
Yes, sir, we do.
You said we do?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, does anybody wish to pull any of the items for consent? Okay, so we'll have the person to speak on consent.
The first speaker is Dan Slavic, followed by Constance Cops.
Dan Slavic, I've lived in Livermore my whole life. Tonight, tonight I'd like to speak on item 5.4 regarding the Springtown open space. It may seem like a small blip, but I just want to bring some attention to it. A small but important part of what was being included tonight is the rare opportunity to design and install an 18 hole disc golf course in Springtown. I would love the chance to provide the city council with some context on this item. Back in 2017, RRM was hired to design a plan for the Springtown open space, which is now the abandoned municipal golf course and to run a series of public workshops for the community to give input. In those meetings almost 10 years ago now, excuse me, disc golf was identified as a highly requested amenity and thus was added to RRM's initial Springtown open space concept plan. A few years later, during the city's Imagine Livermore 2045 public outreach for the general plan update, disc golf in the Springtown open space came up again with 35 plus comments in the online portal, which was many more responses than in any other area. Finally, last fall, the city hosted a public meeting in the Springtown Elks Lodge, led by the city manager and public works director regarding the Springtown open space. Over 200 people attended with standing room only with a large contingent there again in sport of disc golf. Our interaction with the neighbors of Springtown has been extremely positive regarding the subject. People want and will use a well-designed disc golf course that can accommodate all skill levels in the Springtown open space. The city's current course is a small nine hole maintained by LRIPD and it has never been busier, especially as the sports popularity has grown exponentially during COVID and continues to grow now. Course traffic data is collected by a widely used mobile app called UDisc and helps provide city and park municipalities see and recognize how often their course is being used. In 2023, 5,828 disc golf rounds were played and scored through UDisc at our nine hole Livermore course. That's almost 16 rounds a day. One of my favorite things to do when I travel to new places is to find a disc golf course, take a couple discs. Last year, our course had players from 28 different states and six different countries visit and play. Players communatively, cumulatively, took over 25 million steps in Livermore playing disc golf, which is almost 12,000 miles. And this is data from just people using that app. So many other people don't keep score and just love to walk and throw frisbees. People love this sport. It is a low impact, outdoor pass through activity that is accessible to almost any age or ability, young or old. It's free to play on courses that have beautiful open space, such as the Springtown open space. It is a community amenity and all you need is a frisbee and some good walking shoes. I sincerely hope that the city council is supportive of disc golf in the Springtown open space. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
The next speaker is Constance Cops, followed by Carl Wentie.
Hi, Constance Cops, 1422 Tulip Way. I was also at that Elks meeting and I was at every single one of the open space Springtown meetings that I could attend. And today I wasn't even, I didn't even realize this was on the agenda, but I've asked questions at every single one of those meetings. And my questions have been ignored. I've been to park district meetings, they've been ignored. The very first meeting about Springtown, we were all brought into a building and we had assigned seats. We had assigned seats and we all had facilitators at our seat. Now, it is my understanding from the looks of that map that there is a section on there that is owned by the homeowners association. And back when Darren Greenwood was conducting some of these meetings, he went to that, one of the first meetings, it was at the Elks, but one of the very first meetings was also at our HOA. And he sat there and told everybody in my homeowners association that the city owned that building. They had the deed to the golf course, they had this, that and the other thing. Well, when I looked online, it was owned by the HOA, you know? That's very unclear, but my whole thing is I'm really, really angry at about being a stakeholder. Because Darren Greenwood said he included all the stakeholders. He included HOAs, there's three HOAs in Livermore. The city bought land around there. There used to be, I heard a lot more to that golf course that was considered the golf course before the city kind of moved in. And perhaps you need to check on the history of that. When I go to the county records and look at the Elks Club, that's kind of a parking lot. There's not even a building listed there. And when I went to the GPAC meeting, I spoke there. Of course, that's been ignored as well. But that whole midsection of where you want to build a metropolis of, you know, skyscrapers, that's butts right up to that property. And back in the day, I remember there was a proposed housing project. It was party homes and a lot of people were really dead set against that, but there were no clear maps on this. And the reason that people were shooting this down, I think, was it wasn't clear, you know, what was happening. So anything that's not clear with maps and backed up with, you know, facts, or if our city staff comes out in test meetings and you bring up legitimate questions that just get ignored, that's just wrong. You're going to make people so mad if you don't deal with them respectfully. And Springtown HOA was never dealt with respectfully. You need to back up and look at that. Plus, RRM design was approved by someone on the park district who lives on that property. Her back door is to that park. I think that's conflict of interest. I think that you should be more inclusive in your plans for that.
The next speaker is Carl Wentie.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I speak on behalf of item 5.1, which is approval of the draft minutes. The draft minutes are an indication of the record, not an indication, but are the record kept, right? We get a chance to review it this, this open process as it flows through. I think we go back and look at previous minutes in there, you'll, and, and just how the city functioned through it. There's a pretty overwhelming support for wine country, overwhelming support for the passage of measure P. And that's all I just ask is anything possible to get started on that sewer because wine country is failing? That underground sewer is so critical to the health and success of our industry. I can't say that strongly enough. High class problems, a roof over my head and I don't miss meals, but at the same time, our community important in this things to keep it moving forward. So we have challenges all the way through. I didn't feel great when people are on the streets doing, you know, but at the same time, like there's a community to get after, to look after. This is so important for us. I can't say it strongly enough is getting that sewer in the ground. Buena Vista, we knew is going to cause a longer journey of homos, everything else. Get started, get a shovel in the ground. We know once the shovel's in the ground, things will keep on moving. So there's challenges in this world and I appreciate the consideration in that regard. Also, as related to item 5.1, which is the approval of the draft minutes. This, if you look back at the record, you won't find in any minutes, but we have an open seat at the AAC for recreation and parks management. So if you all know anybody, recreation and parks management, we have an open seat on the ag advisory committee. We have a trail subcommittee, urban ag, equine, solar, land use advocacy and outreach, membership committee, water resources and infrastructure. So we're looking at parks and recreation management. Thank you all.
That concludes public comment.
All right, just a quick question. One of the speakers made reference to skyscrapers going up, up around Springtown, specifically around the Springtown golf course. Midtown by the, okay, okay, so midtown. So you skipped a groove there. Okay, so we aren't proposing any skyscrapers at nothing over, skyscrapers over 15 stories. Are we proposing anything? Of course, then again, people were calling legacy apartments a skyscraper and that's, that's four stories. So we're not, we're not talking about anything like.
So this is Paul Spence, your assistant city manager. Midtown is still under discussion, but we're contemplating buildings up to six stories in that area. That's generally the height of the color buildings, right?
Okay, yeah. Councilmember Branning.
Yeah, just a quick request of staff on the disc golf. If you could reach out to Mr. Slavic or his organization as we're moving along with the actual design phase. Make sure we're getting, you know, feedback from people who will be playing golf.
Of course, councilmember Branning, and that outreach has been done over the last year. We have been working with them very, very closely. As a matter of fact, the design that the selected company is going to be working on will include not only disc golf course, but input from, from the various groups interested in that amenity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does remember beer enters?
I remember at that, that town hall that people from the just, they came up and said they would fund most of it and take care of it. That's what they said. So let's see what happens.
Are you talking about the disc golf?
Yeah.
Okay. Just somebody brought up some history here and I just need to, to address it because it's, it's one of these things where it happened and people continued to misstate what happened. But the reason that there was such difficulty in, in Springtown, the whole HOA effort was because of an article that came out in the Springtowner, the little newsletter, that there's no better way to say it. It just lied. It falsely stated to the community that the golf course was going to be replaced with low income housing. And that was not true. But that was why we could never have a good conversation because, oh, no, no, it's my turn. It's my turn. It's my, yes. And, and everybody brought that up. Excuse me, Ms. Cops, it's my turn to speak. You had your opportunity. It's my turn to speak. I didn't interrupt you. But the problem was, the problem was, is it tainted the conversation and we could never have a conversation again about the golf course because the well had been poisoned and that was the problem. There was so much misinformation. People were falsely told that the golf course was going to be replaced with low income housing and that absolutely was not true. So I just want to correct the record that that was not true, but that's what made talking about Springtown so difficult. We are now re-engaging the conversation. We have a plan. We worked with LRIPD to create this plan and we were working with the community to create it as well. So that's where we are. I look forward to this as it continues to, to develop. And we're finally moving this process along and I'm, I'm looking forward to where we go with this. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment on the, the consent calendar. Is there any further, do I have a motion from the vice mayor?
I'll move approval of consent calendar.
Okay, vice mayor moves consent.
I'll second.
Okay, second by councilmember Branning. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 6.1, public hearing. This is the hearing to introduce an ordinance and waive the first reading of amending the municipal code on tobacco retailer licensing.
Honorable Mayor Marshan and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marshava. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by the Livermore Police Department. Item 6.1 is going to be presented by the Livermore Police Department, including our Police Chief Jeremy Young and Captain John Reynolds. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Captain Reynolds from the Police Department, and as the City Manager stated, Chief Young is seated beside me. We are here tonight to recommend amendments to the Tobacco Retailer Licensing Ordinance. Livermore Municipal Code 5.50, known as the Tobacco Retailer Licensing Ordinance, was adopted in 2019 under the current ordinance and absent a statutory exemption. Tobacco retailers in the city of Livermore are prohibited from the sale and possession of flavored tobacco and flavored vaping products. The city continues to receive complaints from, of tobacco retailers selling these products. Police Department staff reports that those retailers are storing the flavored tobacco products out of plain view in the stores to avoid detection. Therefore, police officers and neighborhood preservation must take the word of tobacco retailers that there is no flavored tobacco or flavored vaping products in the store. Staff recommends the existing ordinance be amended to include the following. Number one, authority for police officers and neighborhood preservation from the city of Livermore to enter a licensed tobacco retailer establishment during business hours and make reasonable inspections to verify compliance with the ordinance. Number two, the scope of the inspections includes all areas of the business establishment, not just the areas open to public view. Some examples include, but aren't limited to, offices, cabinets, and storage areas. Officers and neighborhood preservation shall conduct inspections at a time and in a manner that will minimize business interruption. Number three, any person who refuses an inspection of the business establishment will be in violation of this ordinance and may face a civil fine of not less than $250 and not exceeding $1,000 per violation or revocation of their tobacco retail license. Number four, lastly, any business operating without a valid tobacco retail license pursuant to this ordinance shall be subjected to criminal prosecution and seizure of tobacco products for evidentiary value. The recommended ordinance amendments are modeled after other municipal tobacco retail ordinances, and the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, which allows police officers' inspection rights to verify compliance of establishments with ABC licenses. Staff recommends the City Council introduce an ordinance and waive the first reading. And that concludes the presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Any questions? Okay, is there, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Carl Wentey.
Greg Scott, anything we can do to discourage flavored tobacco sales is great. I wish we couldn't, wouldn't sell any tobacco, honestly. We all pay the costs on this physically and environmentally, and I encourage anything to dissuade any tobacco use, especially the flavored tobacco use. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wentey.
On behalf of item 6.1, I want to use this as just a way to say thanks to the preparedness of staff all the way through and come up here. And I'd also like to say thank you for the level of details of maps provided in almost every agenda item and the level of detail you can zoom in and the likes and the tools that we have. You really want to lean into what the hell's going on? It's all out there, right? The tools are there because y'all do a good job with that. Thank you all for being prepared all the way. Thank you all for what you do.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Branning.
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to thank, we have a couple of the people who were responsible for bringing this originally to the council's attention, and I wanted to thank them for all their work. It was a novel ordinance when we first passed it, and so updating it sounds great to me. Thank you.
And they're in the audience tonight, so thank you very much. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see you back there. People are in my way, so thanks for being here. I, I guess having a sting doesn't work. I guess is what we found out, is that true? In other words, having kids go in under the jurisdiction of the Police Department?
At times it does, however, having kids go in in sting operations isn't always ideal.
Sure.
So having the ability to walk into a retail establishment and conduct an inspection would be the, the best situation.
Sure. And I presume we've looked at other, I'll ask the city attorney, we've looked at other jurisdictions that have implemented the same sort of enforcement?
Certainly, so my office, this is Jason Alcol, your city attorney. My office has supported the Police Department in preparing this particular ordinance, and as was described, many of the conditions mirror what already exists under ABC regulations.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Councilmember Berantos?
Thank you for making the amendments, I think it is needed, even though those kids will find a way around it. Yeah, whatever pulls them back, that's great.
Okay, we willing to entertain a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay, Vice Mayor Carling makes the motion, seconded by Councilmember Berantos. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Moving on to 6.2, so hearing to consider adopting a resolution establishing a fee to cover the costs reviewing preliminary applications.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager, Mariana Marasheva, introducing item 6.2, that is going to be presented by Caitlin Harrison, Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department, with the assistance of Steve Riley. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council. The item for your review tonight is to establish a fee for SB 3, SB 330, Preliminary Application for Eligible Housing Development Projects. Housing Crisis Act of 2019 created bills that streamline the permitting process for housing developments. This act included SB 330, which was adopted in 2019. SB 330 is not a required pathway, but instead is an incentive for residential developers as it provides certain rights at the time of their SB 330 application's middle and streamlines the application process. Because of these benefits, we do anticipate for more developers to use this process in the future. City staff developed a SB 330 application to satisfy a state law which allows cities to adopt a fee to account for staff time used to review SB 330 applications. Based on estimated staff time to review SB 330 applications, staff recommends an application fee of $580. Review time is limited to just information on the relatively brief SB 330 application. Staff collects a separate fee to review the standard city land use application, which is required after submittal and review of the SB 330 application. Staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution establishing a fee for the SB 330 preliminary, preliminary application for eligible housing development projects in the amount of $580. Staff is available for any questions.
Any questions from, yes.
How much time does it take to review one of these things?
Based on our experience, we've received about a half a dozen so far. It takes about three hours for a planner to go through the application to make sure it's complete. So we based our fee on that time.
Okay, is there, are there any speakers for the public hearing?
Yes, sir, there's one speaker.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing.
So next, the first speaker is Greg Scott.
Greg Scott, you know, the biggest factor in the housing crisis and homelessness is the socioeconomic factor. We keep raising prices and raising prices and more fees and more fees. And anything we can do to reduce that cost would be beneficial. There's a book for you. I know a couple of you read Rough Sleepers on Homelessness. There's another book, I don't agree with the title, but it's called Homelessness is a Housing Problem. It's by Professor Colburn from Washington University, and he's a professor of housing and real estate, I think it is, and he knows housing policy. Wow. And the other author is Ardern, and he comes from a neuroscience background, but he is now a data scientist and a journalist. He combines the two on environmental and social problems topics. And housing crisis and homelessness is definitely in his thing. Now, their argument in the book, I don't agree with the title, but their argument is to take out the cost, lower the cost of housing by decommodifying housing. Okay, I agree, their argument's very logical. I agree with that part of it, and then how do you do that? Well, their argument is that you change the tax code, you make a more progressive tax code. I agree with that, too. What's the political reality of doing that? I think the probability hovers right around zero. So you're not going to do it, you're not going to de-commodify it. But how, we have to focus on, how are we going to reduce the costs of housing? We keep putting more and more money, and where a state is, okay, the state first estimate was $68 billion deficit for California. Then Governor Newsom came out with, his Rosie projection was 39, almost 40 billion in deficit. Now it's coming out that the reality is $73 billion in deficit. Where do we keep thinking we get the money? If we can, I don't understand how you constructed this $580 fee, but if we can lower fees and costs, that's how we're going to get on the road to solving the problem with housing crisis and homelessness. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Comments from the council? I hear this frequently, people say, well, gee, the city gets $150,000 in fees. This is terrible. This is why the cost of housing is so high. Isn't it true that most of the fees that go into our pass-throughs, that the city collects those for Zone 7, the school district, the park district, all of the other organizations, those are pass-throughs? And it doesn't all go to the city, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Yeah, so everybody says, well, why doesn't the city cut the fees? Well, one of them, I've been in this business for a while, and one of the, the mantras that we have all come to, to repeat over and over again, is those who benefit pay. And that was that the, the current residents should not have to subsidize new development. So those who benefit pay. So the fees that they collect, all these agencies, are actually the cost of delivering service. We're not making money on this. This is the cost of delivering the services. So you can't just say, well, lower the fees, because then it's going to be, have to be subsidized by the current residents, and the current residents don't want to subsidize this. So that's why we have these fees in place. So it is complicated, but, but this, this fee, basically, it, it covers our costs. When you figure the full, the full cost of all the benefits, the salaries, and everything else, that's the cost. So we're not making money on this fee. We're just trying to recoup our costs. So I absolutely support it, because that's, it, it enables the developer to, to pay those costs, and we don't rely upon a, the current residents to subsidize it. So with that, any, any other comments? Have you willing to entertain a motion?
I'd like one more comment.
Yes.
Since I've been on the City Council, I keep hearing affordable housing is, okay, it's based on the median income, right? Of Livermore, which is 100 and what, $150,000? I don't make that. Anyway, so I just wish we could get rid of that term, affordable housing, because it's not affordable to the common folk.
Right.
And maybe you should think about changing the darn term, because it confuses me. I know some math thing, but most, like a teacher, can he afford the affordable housing? Especially the ones going to be built at Geraventa at 2,300 square feet. What's that, those are the affordable housing units, a 2,300 square foot house. I don't think anybody here can buy one. Unless, unless we get the lottery somewhere. But anyway, I was just thinking about that term. Thinking of a newer, better, it fits.
I don't know if that's our term. I think this is one state uses, from which, using the AMI, then they calculate low, very low, and, you know, ratios of that AMI to determine whether or not a single person or a family of four or a family of five fits into that income bracket. So it's, I mean, if you come up with a different name, I guess we could consider it, but right now, that's what the state uses.
Well, it's funny, we have this, the Housing Crisis Act. I got to love, you have to love it. I was at a, an Alameda County Transportation Commission workshop a while back, and they were talking about this, this housing crisis. And in this, this workshop, I, I made the comment, I said, there, there is no housing crisis. This was about four years ago. And everybody looked at me like I was crazy, and I said, well, we just heard the presentation from Santa Clara County, and they have a new development going in, which is 16,000 jobs and 1,800 housing units. So if there was a crisis, that requires you to change your behaviors. And yet this new development had 10 times the, the jobs as the housing units. Well, where do they expect those people are going to live? Well, that's, that's why they're living in Mountain House and Tracy and, and Lathrip and River Islands. So, you know, we, talking about crisis, we approved, back in 2018, we approved 130 affordable apartments, and that's still tied up in the courts. We haven't gotten, gotten past that one either. So, yeah, whatever we need to do to move this ahead, we're doing the best we can to build affordable housing, but unfortunately, we're, we're getting tied up in the courts and lawsuits and referendums and, but I certainly support what you're trying to do here. So with that, I'd entertain a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to the matters initiated, where there's no matters for consideration, council reports and matters initiated. Councilmember Branning.
Thank you. So I have no additional matters beyond what was reported, or no additional report outs other than what was on my report out on the agenda. I will say that, you know, just for everyone, we're coming to a really cool time in Livermore. There's going to be a lot of events coming up over the next many months. It is always, spring is not just when, hopefully, we get, you know, some nice weather, but we also have the Cultural Arts Series starting up. We have a number of events downtown. It's really just a great time, and one of the things that I truly am proud of with the city is the amount of activities and different opportunities for people to be out and enjoy the city. I do have one potential, this might be just a staff question, maybe it's a matters initiated, we'll see. I haven't run this by staff first, but it came up from public comment. Is there any way we can look at chunking the sewer in a way, you know, dividing up the project somehow that we can get started sooner? Perhaps working with TVC? And does that need to be a matter for our consideration? And does that need to be a matter for our considerations?
So we have been in discussions with the county and we are still looking for final agreements and funding commitment from the county in order to start that project. We have identified some city staff resources that would be able to work that project and help move it forward. The county has said it would take them longer to pursue it themselves. And so we have identified some resources ourselves, but we need to get the final funding and agreements in place from the county to start.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, anything to get that going, I think will be much appreciated. All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Verentos? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that in addition to what I wrote in my report was the mayor and Councilmember Verentos and I all then went to the Vineyard donor celebration for Vineyard two point zero. It's a it's a great, great facility as I think twenty three units for to house people and more than half are from this area. And I think the balance are from Alameda County. So I think that's terrific. It's also got nighttime refuge for, I think, twenty cots, something like that for people to spend the night. And there's and I think they're doing a nice job. They it's for a night, they get a breakfast and they don't have to leave. They can stay for the next night. And so you're not you're not asked to leave after breakfast in the morning. So again, I think that's terrific for an increase the number of people that are suffering from unsheltered opportunities here in the in the in the city. And they also have a storage area there for people and mailboxes. So I know that for many of the folks suffering from lack of shelter, that oftentimes they don't have an address or to keep or information to come to them. And so I think that's another real advantage of Vineyard is to have mailboxes for those folks. There's fifty mailboxes for people that are not living there. So that's another nice addition. So I think it really is a well-run, well-organized new facility here in Livermore. We should all be proud that it's now part of our community. I also wanted to, I appreciate Councilmember Branning bringing up the sewer because I was going to ask about that, too. So anyway, a couple of other things that that was on the topic of many of the speakers tonight and that was this open space issue and a couple, I want to correct a couple of things that were said. One was that people only found out about the meeting eight days before before the actual date of the meeting. And that may be true for those people, but it was back in November when the city staff presented to the Open Space Committee the intent to buy that land. So eight days is being a little bit disingenuous. And so it was done well before that. In fact, it was done several months in advance of the meeting in February about the city's interest in buying that. It was also stated that the only protection for that land in perpetuity was for the city to pay back the Open Space Committee. And whereas that is true, it is misleading to think that's the only thing that protects open space. For one thing, the properties are all outside the urban growth boundary. And they would, it would take a vote of the people to do anything else other than making that open space. And so just to be clear, it is true that we could, we the city could pay back what we get from Altamata Open Space Committee if we had some other intent, but it also would take a vote of the public to change that designation. So I just wanted to be clear on that. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, I also had submitted my report. One of the things I want to recognize is that we had the employee service awards last week, recognizing over seventy five employees with over one thousand one hundred ninety years of service to the communities. So thanks to all of the tremendous staff that have been doing the great work here, which continues to keep Livermore a great place to live, work and raise a family. I was also at the Alameda County Transportation Commission where we received a legislative update and an overview of the countywide transportation plan which is entitled Making Alameda County Safer. So it's looking at corridors where there's a high accident incidents, sixty five percent of pedestrian collisions and fifty five percent of bicycle collisions are on four percent of the roads. So that's really low hanging fruit as you start to look at how can we make Alameda County safer by targeting these these high risk areas? And then Vice Mayor Carling and I were at the Arrow of Light Ceremony for troop nine fourteen as the Cub Scouts cross over into into scouting. So it's a it's a fun event and seeing the kids and the enthusiasm and of course
Mighty Pack nine fourteen, as they call themselves.
Yeah, yeah. And of course, the Vice Mayor is an Eagle Scout, so he was able to speak to the 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 young people and inspire them. So it was a good event. So with that, there being no further business coming before the council, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to the next program of the meeting on March eleventh, seven o'clock, right here. Meeting adjourned.
Very good.
Thank you.